Yeah, I already did. Just waiting for them to turn it on. Good morning, everyone. I'm calling to order the regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting. My name is Councilmember Andrew Johnson. I'm joined today by councilmembers Gordon, Kano, Reich, Yang, Quincy, Orsami, and Frye. And we are a quorum of the committee. Today, we have two items on our agenda. I'm actually going to be pulling the paid parental leave policy item because it was heard before two separate committees, both the Executive Committee and Ways and Means Committee, and will be going forward to council with recommendation on Friday. With that, we do have two items, the first being our 2015 internal audit plan and the second being a presentation for Youth Cabinet. And with that, I will ask Will Tetzel, our city auditor, to come forward and present to us. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Will Tetzel. I'm the Director of Internal Audit, and today, I'm pleased to present to you the approved 2015 Audit Plan. The audit planning process is somewhat long-winded, and so I wanted to talk about actually how we arrived here. And that starts with risk assessment. So, a risk assessment is really a series of meetings with city leaders and department leaders, divisional leaders, to get an understanding of where the heightened areas of risk are within the city. But there's a few more objectives there that we have. One is to continually communicate with city leaders on risk, internal controls, and risk management responsibilities. This really helps drive that understanding of how we'd like to communicate with departments, help them understand what we mean when we talk about risk. And so, it really helps that foundation of getting better information back and forth between the two parties. And really to continually evaluate the risk landscape. Although we meet once or twice a year with department leaders and city leaders, we like to try to stay in touch throughout the year, so if we need to change the plan, if there's emerging risks that come up and we need to change the plan, or work on something differently, then we can do that, and we'll be aware of it as well. There's three types of projects that we'll typically do in internal audit, so I wanted to define those and talk a little bit about the differences of those. The first is a traditional audit, so this is an objective examination of evidence for the purpose of providing an independent assessment on risk management, control, or governance. The second consultation is an advisory service that's agreed to with the customer and is intended to prove risk management, governance, and controls without the auditor assuming management responsibility. The third is a program audit, and this is an independent examination for the purpose of reporting on the extent to which an entity is faithfully, efficiently, and effectively carrying out programs for which it's responsible. I want to call some of the differences here between an audit and a program audit. So, with a typical audit, what we'll do is we'll look for areas of heightened risk and focus on those, and typically, report out areas where there's opportunities for improvement. In a program audit, we'll look at a larger scope and we'll report out on what's working well and where there's opportunities. So, things might not be high-risk from certain perspectives, but we could scope those in and talk about those. And then a consultation is really generally focused on programs or processes or implementations of newer things. So, we have some good examples in the plan, and I'll make note of those as I go through. In the next slide, we wanted to break down the plan in a couple different ways to think about it. As I mentioned, we have audits, consultations, and program audits, so you can see that we're doing two audits, eight consultations, and one program audit this year on the plan so far. And then, from a lens of where in the city we're looking, we have two projects that are enterprise-wide. We have three projects that are primarily focused on the coordinator departments, and six projects that are primarily focused on the charter departments. So, I'll walk through the plan quickly and give you some highlights on each of the projects. These aren't in any specific order. The first one is governance of third parties, and this is an enterprise-wide consultation. This is really evaluating controls in place to manage contracting, monitoring, and compliance as it relates to the governance of third parties, and third party being either a vendor, or it could be an entity that the city funds either in whole or in part. The next one on the list is complaint protocol, and this is developing a protocol to follow up on a complaint, an ethics violation, a fraud case, et cetera. So, there's many parties involved, and so solidifying who gets involved at what point and what decisions need to be made. The third, we are consulting on the Enterprise Land Management System cashiering module. So, this is looking for opportunities to improve that functionality within Elms, which is the Enterprise Land Management System, and try to identify control gaps or segregation of duties issues. Next one would be a performance audit, and this is the evaluation of the neighborhood and community, some of the neighborhood and community relations programs. And we're overseeing this, so there was staff direction. This is in RFP right now, and we'll shortly start picking vendors. Proposals are due on May 1st for that one. Next is data governance and records management, so this is evaluating the city's adherence to the Minnesota Data Practices Act and the Federal Government Official Records Act, another enterprise-wide audit. Next slide here, we're doing a consultation with the Controller's Office over internal controls on financial reporting, and happy to report that we'll be using an urban scholar on this project. We were assigned an urban scholar that'll start here in May, or next month in May. So, this is evaluating the adequacy and maturity of the continual monitoring effort around internal controls over financial reporting. Next on the list is license, permit, and inspection process. This is cross-departmental audit, and this is evaluating controls around licensing, permitting, and inspecting services that the city executes, and how that activity triggers and impacts downstream processes such as property tax assessments, cash collection, and handling, et cetera. Next project is a purchasing card pilot program review, so you're all well aware of the P Card Pilot Program. We're consulting with them on adherence to and adequacy of policies as well as controls in place to monitor the ongoing execution of the P Card Program. Next project is police body camera privacy and security review, and this is a consultation to assess the procedural and technology risks involved in collecting, transferring, storing, redacting, tagging, and provisioning body camera data in order to best understand and manage the unique risks of the two vendors being evaluated in the pilot program. And we'll try to wrap that up here, probably mid-May, to give that information to Lieutenant Reinhardt, so they can make their recommendation. The next one is the police quality assurance program, so the police department is looking to hire some people so they can have their own quality assurance and risk management team that might look at things like training, equipment checkout, scheduling, and they've asked us to come in and help them design what that program might look like, and how to potentially evaluate some of the areas that they're looking at, so they can be comfortable with the process that they're implementing. And the final one is the Police Records Management System implementation. So, we've just engaged to work with the Minneapolis Police Department to identify risks with the configuration and implementation of their new records management system. I think that's planning to go in 2016 or early 2017. So, those are the audits, consultations, and performance audits. The next thing I wanted to bring up are department projects. So, as you know, we're a newly restarted department, and I wanted to talk about a few of the projects that we have going on this year to get us sort of up to speed and in a mature state. The first is benchmarking, so we're trying to identify cities that are leaders in the internal audit space, and look at the work they're doing and how they're doing it, so we can kind of pick and choose how we'd like to either draft our reports or do our risk assessment, a variety of different things. We also wanted to take the opportunity to collect data from them, audits that they're doing in departments that are similar to ours, and then share some of those findings out to department heads, so make them aware and help them understand what some of their peers around the country are getting, some of the observations that are coming out of audits from their peer groups within the country. The next is findings follow-up, so making sure that as we do have recommendations and observations, that we have a robust activity around ensuring the implementation of that or the remediation of that, and as those remediation activities change, that we're aware of what's going on, so we can either stay involved or help make different recommendations depending on the changing risk landscape in those areas. And then, report templates. If we think about the different bodies of work that we have and how we want to do them, we want to make sure that the information that comes out of the internal audit department is succinct and useful. And if you look at a lot of internal audit reports, some of them can be extremely lengthy, and so we really want to make sure that when we do issue something, that it's something that people will actually read and something that's useful. So, we're tinkering around with a few different variations of reports that we can use to make sure that the information gets to the right people and that they can quickly digest that information. The notion of risk appetite is something that we're interested in, and this is really around the city's risk tolerance. Right now, it's sort of promulgated by departments. They've identified their own risk tolerance, and it's important from the city's perspective to take somewhat of a stance on that, not that it has to be a dollar threshold or exactly defined, but I think it would help department heads and divisional leaders and council members in the mayor's office if the city could get towards some risk tolerance, and in doing so, it can really help people understand the decisions that they're making, other things that they might need to consider. This isn't something that internal audit can really drive, because it's not up to us to help the city understand what its risk tolerance should be, but we can help facilitate some of those conversations. And so, we're going through some ISO standards in that regard, and looking at what other cities are doing and other organizations, and then try to come up with some suggestions or topics that the city can tackle to try to move that needle on the city's risk appetite and how we use that to make decisions in the city. And then finally, risk assessment, as I described in the beginning. It's a long and never-ending process of conversations and looking at our peers and understanding what the city's doing to get an idea of what we should work on in the coming years. And another point I wanted to make about the audit plan is this is very much so a point-in-time document, so as risks emerge or priorities change within the city, we want to stay nimble and be able to refocus our efforts. And so, if something's emerging and we deem it necessary to look at, we'll change our audit plan accordingly and refocus on some different priorities. And if something that we've planned to do is no longer of importance, or the risk appetite there has changed, then we can either push that off entirely or move it to a different year if we deem necessary.
Any questions? Councilmember Palmasano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. More of just a comment. I wanted to just make it real clear why we've asked our internal auditor to come and present to you all this morning. This is the 2015 plan as approved by the Audit Committee. That includes councilmembers Kano and Quincy and myself. But the reason why it's important for you all to hear the kind of work that's being planned this year is because you all chair different committees of council, and it's very important for you to support this work. The heads of departments that are part of some of these audits don't report to the Audit Committee. They report to committees that you chair. So, it's important that we stand up and we support this work and we help, and I ask you all to help to continue rebuilding this robust audit department that I've been working on so hard for this past year. I think, as you can see, we have the right people in place for the job. Similar to the past, you see a standard audit efforts underway already, but different from the past, you see a lot more consultative work, and you see more program audit kinds of efforts. So, I think that this is valuable, that this is useful. I also like the more continuous assessments, that we are no longer working from an old heat map of risk, and I really appreciate the way this is all coming together, and I really appreciate all the department heads that have been part of and working with audit. So, thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to commend you for coming forward to committee of the whole. I think this is really helpful to understand what the audit plan is. I know we're not supposed to approve it, but I feel approve, I approve of much of it, and very appreciative of a lot of it. I really also think it's helpful to look at the different kind of categories that you've developed, the audit, the consultation, and the more formal program audit, and I have to say that some of the consultations that the department's offering, police body cameras, the community relations department and evaluation, those kinds of things could be very valuable to the work that the council's doing in terms of development policy and also the city department. So, thanks for sharing this, and I'll look forward to hearing more about the results of the work you do in 2015.
Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'd like to add my comments to the list of accolades. I do appreciate this plan being so thought out and thoroughly talked to with all of the department heads involved, because I think we're seeing in this iteration of an audit committee and the auditor and the staff on board at this time is very different than it was my last term when we instituted the Audit Committee and the Audit Process. It's very much a consultative process, as the Chair of the Committee, Councilmember Palmasano, had said. This is a big change, but it's a change for the better, and it really comes with the coordination, the collaboration, and the spirit of doing things better in a more transparent way, in averting risk, and doing our business plans in a more consistent way. So, I want to thank Mr. Tetzel, of course, for being here, and of course, acknowledge all the work that Councilmember Palmasano has put into developing this committee in a very productive and cross-department way. So, thank you for that. Thank you.
Councilmember Frye? All right. Any additional discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll comment just ever so briefly. Wanted to point out that one year ago, we did not even have an auditor. So, thanks to the work of Councilmember Palmasano and Mr. Tetzel, you've obviously filled the position very well, so thank you.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was curious, do you expect to complete all of these in 2015? And then, I wondered, could you talk about the timeline for, I think as we see this, which seems like a very successful approach, there may be more interest in audits in the future, as councilmembers sort of see how this works and come up with their own ideas. So, could you talk about the process as we look forward to 2016, just really briefly?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Mr. Johnson? And Councilmember Bender? Yes, we did get pretty aggressive in our plan for the year, intentionally so. I think we want to really get all of our tentacles out there and make sure that people can see what we can do and that we can quickly come in and make a difference within the city. It's pretty aggressive, but it can be done. I think some of what can slow us down is when departments get busy and they're unable to work with us, but we try to make sure that as we schedule these out, that we're minding their time and being proactive in making sure that the way that we do these audits is conducive to how things are working in the city and cyclical sort of busy times within departments. Typically, within an audit year, from my experience, especially when we're starting from scratch, you'll see a lot of work get done, and then in sort of the latter half of the year, a lot of reporting will start to churn out. Sometimes, reports can take a while to come out, because we want to make sure that people are in agreement and that we're not surprising people, so it can take a while to get the draft written, make sure that management agrees with that, help them with their response to that, and then get that all finalized. So, that process does take a while, so it'll be a little bit before we start to see final products out of some of these bodies of work. But the nice thing with all the consultations we're doing is that there's probably a little bit less rigor on what we put in a report. It'll be more like a memorandum, and so those can go out a little bit more quickly. In the coming years, I think what we'll see is more departments getting engaged. The vast majority of the work that we have on this plan was ideas and recommendations that we wholeheartedly agree with that came from city leaders, departmental leaders, and division heads, and I think right away, that's a great testament to the fact that people understand that our goals are the same as theirs, and that we're trying to help, and that we can give buckets of time to them to help them understand and research and evaluate a process or an implementation. And so, I think, once we get out there and do more of that, people will probably be a little bit more forthcoming with the conversations that they have with us and really bringing us in to help them. That's really a function of how effective we can be, is how much people tell us, because we can't know everything that's going on within the city. And so, the more people tell us and the more forthcoming they are, the better we can do in making sure that we're focusing on the right risks and the top priorities for the city.
This is fantastic. Great work. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? I just wanted to say thank you as well. I think the plan that you put forward is quite comprehensive yet succinct. It also does a great job explaining the priorities and resource allocations, and it gives me a great deal of confidence in the work that your department is doing. So, I want to thank you and Councilmember Palmasano and the rest of the Audit Committee members and audit team for the work on this. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, do we need to move to receive and file this? All right, we'll move to receive and file. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. With that, we move to item number two. Thank you very much. We have our Youth Cabinet. With that, our Commissioner Muskan.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'm here to give you an update on the Youth Cabinet. I don't believe we've updated you before. We are a creature of your creation a number of years ago. I am co-chair of the Youth Cabinet, and City Attorney Susan Siegel is my other co-chair, but she has other duties as assigned today up at the dais. I'm also joined today by Trystee Monson, Patience Ferguson, and Kelly Jones, who will be reporting on the work of some of the subcommittees after I've given you an overview. And I also want to acknowledge that Councilmember Quincy has been a faithful, a tender champion and proder for us, and we really appreciate that. So, let's start with a little bit of history. This is, the twinkle in the eye of this group occurred perhaps back in a visit that a delegation from Minneapolis made to Uppsala, Sweden, and as they visited there, they visited public works places and parks and all sorts of different venues, but on collective reflection, they noticed that everybody, no matter what their assigned work was, talked about things through the lens of young people, the future of the city, and what they were doing in their work that would support young people staying there, thriving there. And so, folks who had been on that trip, which did not include me, although, next time, please take me, came back and said, "Let's see what that would look like here in Minneapolis." And so, we began with a group in 2011, a group across the enterprise representing various departments internal to the city, to dream together, think together, what would we do here if we wanted to create more of what people saw in Sweden? And so, in 2012, there were some other activities happening. The Youth Coordinating Board, for the first time, began having a youth compact, came to the city, asked the city to sign a youth compact to formalize its commitment to work on some of the goals of the Youth Coordinating Board, and we had the first state-of-the-city results in Minneapolis. So, we began to work in this cross-jurisdictional way with more intentionality around young people. So, in 2013, the Youth Cabinet City Council Resolution was passed, and I'll go over some of the highlights of that. And then, in '14 and '15 now, we have really begun to think about the so what, you know, what is our work? What is the priority work? Where do we want to start? And then, begin the work that we have laid out. So, that's what I'll describe for you today. The Youth Cabinet Resolution has five primary goals, and I think the first two goals are the ones that we have so far paid the most attention to. The first is connect and integrate city efforts to address issues affecting children and youth, and so you'll hear in the reports of the work group how we have been addressing that. We have also had regular participation of Anna Groot from the Youth Coordinating Board, and so connecting our work with our city's obligations as a member of that multi-jurisdictional group. The other goals are to develop a framework for incorporating needs of youth and families as a focal point of the city, and I think there, we're using the approach of lifting up shining examples as opposed to creating new mandates for departments. So, the work groups that you'll hear about really are new shiny examples of how we are working together around youth. And also, using that same approach to encourage department investment in youth and families, and identifying and fostering opportunities for engaging the community in supporting youth and families as well. Our vision is that the city of Minneapolis will be a national model where all youth can flourish, reach their full potential, and become long-term contributing residents. The Youth Cabinet is committed to living out the Minneapolis values that have been articulated by the council and the mayor, and its work impacts four of the five city goals. For example, under a city that works, one of the strategies is departments work seamlessly and strategically with each other and with the community, and I think this is an embodiment of that approach. We have broad representation, and a number of folks from these areas are here in the room with us today from the mayor's office. The coordinator's office provides us logistical support. As I mentioned, the city attorney is my co-chair, and we have, if you're here representing a jurisdiction in the Youth Cabinet, raise your hand. All right, Patience, raise your hand. And Anna Groot expresses her regrets. She was called away for a meeting with the Minneapolis Public Schools, otherwise she would have been here. Sometimes, people think, yikes, things with the word youth in it, we got a lot of those, how do they relate to each other? And so, this graph was created at the time that we passed the resolution, that the city council passed the resolution creating the cabinet, I'm sorry. So, we have the Youth Coordinating Board, which is this multi-jurisdictional body that we belong to, and the Youth Cabinet then is the Minneapolis-specific sort of expression of that commitment for the city and more, but is at a minimum connected in that way. The Youth Congress is a creation of the Youth Coordinating Board, but we have tapped into the youth who are members of the Youth Congress to inform us and for us to learn about how to engage youth. Certainly, city departments are connected to the Youth Cabinet, and then, plans such as the Youth Violence Prevention Blueprint take advantage of these relationships and interconnect, but don't really compete. So, I hope you'll feel satisfied that we're thinking of all the different ways we're thinking and trying to get them lined up so that we're not stumbling over each other and we're actually doing new and better work as a result. So, just a reflection on who youth are in Minneapolis or who we are in Minneapolis through the eyes of our young people. We usually think of the term youth as typically between the ages of 10 and 24, but sometimes we talk about children, and so children are any birth-through, so it's a malleable concept. Thirty-four percent of residents of Minneapolis are 24 and under, so that's a very sizable proportion of who we are. I think we're a fairly young community. We hear a lot about the aging of America, but for Minneapolis, we're a pretty young place. Twenty percent of us here in Minneapolis are under age 18. Thirty-two percent of children under 18 live in poverty, so we have some very significant challenges facing those young people. And 70% of young people in Minneapolis are people of color, so part of a changing demographic for our city. As we As we looked forward then to taking action once we were formed, we thought, where are some areas that are both address important needs, where there is opportunity for collaboration across the enterprise and where we can build on existing work? And where we landed initially is these three areas that you'll hear about today. Developing a youth asset inventory so we can have a place where all our data kind of comes together so we can see where opportunities overlay with need and maybe impact our planning. Housing stability, we recognize that housing stability is really important for young people to be successful. What role is the work of the city playing in either destabilizing or stabilizing housing? So you'll hear about that. And then workforce development. Certainly, young people need a future. The city of Minneapolis itself needs a future workforce. How can those issues come together and and work as as one notion? So unless you have questions for me, I think it might be best to take questions at the end, but if you have questions for me, I'll pause. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Trystee Monson to talk about the youth asset inventory.
I'm not seeing any questions.
Okay.
Hi. I'm Chair Trystee Monson, Director of Long Range Planning. I think everybody knows me, but just for the record. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about the youth asset inventory. Because the Youth Cabinet, like the rest of the city, has really identified really data as a core function of what we need to do and understanding and contextualizing issues in policy through a data lens. So some key issues that we're addressing through the youth asset inventory are that. We want to be a city that makes informed decisions based on data. And also can track indicators and measure results. So youth is one of those issues that touches really a lot of policy issues, and I'll talk about that in a minute. We want to be a city that attracts and retains families. We know that we can see a trend of youth sort of departing the city at school age. We don't understand exactly why yet, but that's a key issue. How are we serving families and youth? And, you know, we want to be a city that cares about youth in its entirety, not just children. But we're defining youth as really people through college age. Those are a set of unique needs and we want to cast some light on that and focus on that. So accomplishments and next steps. Our roadmap for the pilot stage of the youth asset inventory. Are we missing a slide? Sorry, just a moment. I feel like I'm missing a couple of slides here. Okay, sorry. Okay, so, well, I'll just go on with this and I'll plug it in in a minute. So our roadmap for the pilot stage, I'm going to come back to this. I actually think this is a repetitive slide. Sorry, folks. First, I'm going to identify what is the youth asset inventory. So the youth asset inventory is conceived as a data mapping tool. It'll inform city staff and electeds about issues pertinent to how we make decisions, both at the department level and at the policy level related to youth. And we're really building this on to the IOP, the Intelligent Operations Platform as a base. So it'll be a mapping tool. And what we're doing is we're looking at demographic data. So in other words, US Census, population characteristics by geography, environmental conditions, which are a little bit more fluid, and that includes things like crime, things like housing stability, mobility of population, et cetera. Assets, those are conceived as sort of the things that are hard assets like schools, parks, natural features, things that are considered an amenity for youth, active youth and education. And then youth programs. And this has been kind of a difficult one to pin down, but we were fortunate that actually Anna Groot is leading this What's Up 612 Programmed Event platform that they're building with SportsEngine, who also does a lot of the work with DID around programming. And that will be able to feed into this platform as well. So our goals for developing the tool, what we want to do is we want to collect the relevant data as a starting point. And we think we've pretty much completed that. In fact, you know, we're not only collecting data pertinent to youth and we're going to look at some of those data sets in a moment, but we're also doing contextual data. So we've procured a number of housing data sets and also economic data sets that we can use to sort of contextualize some of these youth issues. We're kind of getting into now test driving the data and we're working very closely with IT, specifically with James Blake, Stacy Blaskowski over there, the new data scientist, Arrow Kilson, and a couple of folks in planning to really get a handle on what the data is telling us and to do a few scenarios. Our next step is to define questions and analytical objectives. And this is where it really becomes important to engage and really identify some of the policy priorities. That's going to tell us really what tool do we need to build? What indicators do we need to track? What do we want to know about youth? And we'll kind of look at an example of that in a minute. Once we get that down, we'll be ready to design a pilot interface. And that interface would be internally focused to begin with, but would be a tool that you could kind of go to maybe a little bit more than a dashboard, maybe a mapping interface to look at the issues that are pertinent to a specific policy. And that's what we're aiming aiming for. That we see as, you know, a period, a pilot period that would maybe last, you know, I'm sure it would be less than a year before we evaluated the tool and determined whether this was something we should roll out kind of, you know, as a broader, a broader initiative or on other policy matters. So in terms of the data being collected or that has been collected, you can see on the left, there's a lot of city and publicly owned data that we already have, including regulatory services data, CPED, Park Board, Metro Transit, et cetera, census, obviously. There's some things that are really hard to get that we don't have yet. You know, beyond the What's Up 612, we don't have much on youth programming. We don't have family level information. We don't have student information, although we have school locations, childcare facility data. These are things that are difficult to include primarily because the data we use needs to be both accessible, available and regularly maintained. We want to know that it's quality data. So we're looking and seeking additional sources of data, but this is, this is one of the challenges. I will say on the positive, referring again to the contextual data, we're getting enormous resources there with regard to housing to be able to determine things like housing stability and also economic data, things related to workforce and and family dynamics on that front. So in terms of test driving the data, I'm just going to show you one thing today, which is a map. It's actually two maps. One shows concentrations of youth and one is about crime hotspots and how they relate. So this is just a map showing blocks whose youth population is more than one standard deviation greater than city mean. In other words, concentrated youth. This just gives you a sense of where kids are living in the city. Just adding one data point to that, looking at residential crime hotspots combined with concentrations of youth, it just starts to give you a sense of once we begin adding layers in and contextualizing issues, how that might impact thinking about policies and programs related to youth. There's a lot more of these kinds of things that we're working on, but I would say until we define the questions and the analytical objectives and the policy intent a little bit more specifically, we won't venture talking about any results.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One of them about the the map or maybe the one right before this one. I was just curious about, in this instance, are we including youth up to age 24?
And actually, that's a great question, which I intended to note. In this case, we're talking not up to age 24. So again, defining what we mean by youth in the map is important.
That's what it looked like, and it might be nice to have on the slide for future use. I was also, of course, this made me very curious about, well, what is the mean? And how big is the standard deviation? I think it's great that we're using the city mean and one standard deviation, but it's hard for me to get my heart connected to it and to really understand it. Do we know what the mean is?
I have a table that would, that would tell that information. I don't know it off the top of my head. But yes, this is both in table form and map form.
All right, so.
So we could include that. If we were going to do some sort of a white paper, we would include that information.
And so ultimately, when it's accessible to other city staff who are working on it, it will have that table with it. Can't do it. I did have one other question since I have stopped the show. I'll ask it too. About the previous slide and the data that we were collecting. And I wasn't quite sure if that included health data. I know that sometimes there's we track things like lead blood level and there's certain thresholds, and it might be interesting to capture that. Maybe it's considered under reg services or somewhere there. But I was curious about that specific thing.
I think that would be one of those, that would be a contextual data set that we would, we could very easily incorporate. So we're looking at actually a number of those contextual data sets that may not be kind of in our bucket of, you know, maybe not on this list, but we have it. So that would be something we could very easily add.
So I'm just throwing that out there as an idea for you then. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Kano?
Yeah, my question was very similar to Councilmember Cam Gordon's question, and it's related to the maps we've been asking your team to put together where you overlay the R-CAP zones with Representative Karen Clark's cumulative, cumulative health impact map that she often shows when crafting policy at the state. So you're, so I guess I'm just trying to figure out, are you going to provide that with that or you're just going to add it as a, you know, per base, like if I ask for it, you can give it to me, but is it part of the comprehensive approach at looking at the health indicators? I know we were looking at asthma, hospitalization rates or calls and also the blood level issue. And then maybe clarifying a little bit more this issue of age. Because obviously in my head, I'm thinking of the vulnerable populations, which tend to be the elders and then the very young children who then grow up developing asthma in certain communities. I don't know if you could just speak to those issues a little?
Yeah, I mean, that's a perfect example of maybe a policy interest that could be informed by this data set or this tool. So just as we might look at, for instance, housing stability, which I think you're going to hear about next, we could also look at public health and really understand, you know, where the youth population is with regard to that issue. And so, you know, the beauty of the IOP is that it's very, very easy to add data and create maps. And so it's really a matter of saying, well, what data do we want to incorporate in order to study this specific policy issue? I think collecting it is, is sort of the hard work and defining the questions is the second piece of the hard work. But once we have those things in place, once we know what the policy objective is, once we understand what data is required to ask and answer the question, it's not, it's not hard to put that together.
And then I have two questions that are kind of related, so I'll ask them together. And one of the goals is really attracting and retaining families. When talking with constituents about that, a lot of that comes down to perceptions, especially around schools. And so, A, how is Minneapolis Public Schools involved with this in terms of whether tapping into their data and even a formal role potentially in the Youth Cabinet? And also, how are we tracking or are we going to be tracking and trying to include that perception piece? Whether that's survey data or what have you to really understand? Do people feel that their schools are as high performing as they are?
I think that that's a great question, and we've been kind of coming at the school question more from a data collection perspective. We have not yet succeeded in getting any student level data. I think there's, you know, a little bit of discomfort around sharing that. But maybe if the public schools were actually a partner in this effort, that would be a little bit more forthcoming. We do, I mean, one of the guys in IT actually has a really great relationship with Minneapolis Public Schools, and so we're working on that as the, the, the long answer to the short answer to the question. But the survey piece of it, we don't currently have the capacity to conduct a statistically relevant survey within the city. That would be something that could be funded and we could undertake, you know, at the right time. But yeah, we would love to be able to, by the way. We would love to be able to do surveys that are statistically relevant and have the capacity. There are many questions that we can't get at through existing data sets that we could use a survey tool for.
So maybe that's an opportunity from this where a recommendation to council could be around
Absolutely.
capacity and maybe even potentially a formal role for the schools with this.
That could be, yes. Yeah, and we can make a note of that. And I would like to say there's, you know, a few other really strategic and key policy issues that are embedded within the youth asset inventory. One that we've talked about a little bit is the migration issue, families kind of leaving the city. Another one that you'll hear about today is workforce because, because we identify youth as up to age 24 and because we know that college educated young people are really the backbone of the new economy in terms of startups, in terms of skills. We want to retain those folks. So that again is, is kind of a key issue that we could begin to reveal. And the third I'll mention is the, our equity goals. Because 70% of youth are people of color. And we want to make sure that there is opportunity and, and retention for that community.
All right, Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I think this is terrific that we're seeing this report. This is actually showing what's happened. It hasn't, we're not talking about a framework or an idea and something we need to continue to support. This is actually showing outcomes. So this is a great opportunity, and I'm glad we're having this great conversation about these topics. I think in each of the questions that have just been asked or comments made kind of points to one of the concerns that we had when we set up the Youth Cabinet. Because this is not intended to replace the Youth Coordinating Board. There is a multi jurisdictional joint powers agreement with the Park Board, with the county, with the schools and with the city that created the Youth Coordinating Board. This, what we've done here in the Youth Cabinet is just be city enterprise focused. We have a tendency to say, boy, youth should be involved in this. Well, nope. That's not what we're talking about here. We're trying to fix this problem. We're trying to fix asthma or we're trying to fix blood levels in lead exposure. Yes, we are trying to fix those, but that's a health issue. And what we're doing here is what can the enterprise do? How can we put a youth lens about it? And that's why we have all the departments represented. I think when Kelly's able to talk about some of the housing stability issues, it's how regulatory services can input into this process. We've had the police department involved in this. How can we talk about juvenile violence or making things safer or domestic abuse? Those are existing programs already in place, and we're talking about how to bring this back to the enterprise to how can we think about it? So it's a terrific overlay of data that's available. It's not trying to address the concerns about the achievement gap, attendance, enrollment. This is all youth in the city, whether they're going to a Minneapolis Public School, a parochial school, a private academy or a charter public school. That's the asset that we're trying to track and identify. And this is why it's important to have the, the planning department involved. Are we, should we be planning neighborhoods differently, recognizing that there's a concentration of youth? Does that mean that maybe we should be planning other amenities, youth services, youth programs involved in that area that gives us something strategically and conceptually and neighborhood focused as part of the planning department? So it's a perfect blend of all these operations. So we're not trying to fix problems at this point. We're trying to identify the assets that are there and how they're, how we're serving the youth. And as a city, how can we plan for it? We have transportation and public works people involved in this committee. Should we be talking about where we're putting transit lines or where we're suggesting Met Council put transit lines? Are we talking about how we should be marking stop signs and crosswalks? Those are the big policy issues that can come out of this work, but it begins with assessing where we're at, what we have and how we think about it. So I appreciate everybody's comments like, hey, can we make sure childhood asthma doesn't happen in my ward? This is a citywide enterprise. What is it? What are the things that are driving it from a health perspective that we should be thinking about? So it's really important work and I appreciate that. And I appreciate all the comments from my colleagues here because this really helps drive what we're thinking about, how we're thinking about it and how we can put into action to make improvement. But if we were just focusing on health issues, that's what we were doing before. Because we didn't blend in regulatory services or the housing or the workforce development. These are the things that we've put together in the, in the Youth Cabinet. So I'm excited to see this work and I look forward to the rest of the presentation. Don't mean to dominate the conversation, Mr. Chair. But I just wanted to alert everybody to what we're about and, and what we're working on and really encourage more comments from all of my colleagues to say all of my colleagues to say what we should be thinking about. Thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if you're finished with your presentation, but since we're all discussing this, you know, I just wanted to highlight how important I think it is for us to be doing this sort of geographic based, data focused analysis when we're making policy decisions. And as the chair of the committee that long range planning reports to, I just wanted to sort of note that, you know, I have, I think we've added a position in I T to help support this work. But as council members are looking at policy changes that require a lot of data and analysis like this work, there's a significant amount of work happening around housing data right now, the workplace, data collection and analysis. I think we're asking a lot more of the long range planning group in terms of data collection, analysis and mapping. And at some point, I think there's just gonna have to be sort of acknowledgement of we're doing a lot more with the same staff. So maybe either adding resources or sort of, you know, understanding what that means that we won't be doing in the future. So just wanted to thank you for bringing this sort of lens to this work. Because again, I think the geographic piece is really important and the value that long range planning can really bring to this work.
Thank you, appreciate that comment.
I don't see any additional questions at this time.
So that basically is the presentation, but I just want to sort of put an exclamation point on, on what Councilmember Quincy said and emphasize this is the youth asset inventory. In other words, there are no solutions here. What we want to do is create the platform to ask the questions. And those can be policy questions from many different perspectives, but this is gonna be the collection of data that you can query. And we can easily enrich it and add other layers. So, but again, it is, yes, an inventory and not a solution to a specific policy question. Thank you. And I, I want to invite Kelly Jones up. She's gonna go on to tell you about item two, which is housing stability.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Kelly Jones and I'm the Deputy Director for Administration and Community Engagement for Regulatory Services. And I had the pleasure of helping facilitate the group of folks who talked, who was tasked with looking at housing stability. The participants in the group that I led included folks from the Y C B, the Youth Coordinating Board, Hanover County Office to End Homelessness. We did expand a little bit outside city to engage some of our other partners. Community Planning and Economic Development, Housing, Neighborhood and Community Relations, Health Department, and then Staff from Regulatory Services. The goal of our housing stability group was to identify ways that city departments can align resources, programs and priorities that contribute to housing stability for youth and by extension, their families that support them. So we spent some time looking at our existing programs in the city, looking at gaps in services, areas where we had, where the demand outstripped resources. I'm really excited about Christie's work and how that can support us in the future. We looked at opportunities for coordination, continued coordination and alignment, and we prioritized the areas where we have, we felt we could have the most significant impact as a housing team. We also spent some time looking at research, which shows that high mobility for young people is extremely disruptive and that poor and under-resourced families tend to move more often than families with access to wealth. The research also showed, and there was a bit of discussion here today, that some of the common reasons cited for mobility and high mobility include cost barriers such as rent increases and poor maintenance, some specifically related to safety or health. Those are the reasons families indicate why they need to make moves in their housing choice. So the, the key issues and findings, again, after considerable conversation of our group, was that there is a general lack of information with young people about what constitutes safe housing and that there isn't an awareness of some of the tools available to them and their families to assist. There's a sense that there's disconnected resources and this is especially true for young people facing homelessness, which is a huge area of instability for young people. We looked at and considered possible policies and practices that might, that we have in city government that may impact stability for some families. And again, we confirmed or revisited the notion or the fact that there's a lack of availability and affordable and some long-term housing for families with children and especially with limited incomes and resources. And we also looked at how our older, sometimes poorly maintained housing stocks can contribute to unhealthy living environments, which as I mentioned before, contribute to mobility. And with that, we also looked at available, available resources for property owners to help them address and maintain these issues without necessarily impacting the costs on the people that live in their homes. So after, again, through our process, we identified places where we thought the priority areas emerged and for us to do, keep our youth lens and promote housing stability in the city. There was a lot of conversation about the, the need to really do more to be out there, to go where young people are and to engage them in the places where they hang out and spend their time and to provide information to young people and for young people and by young people about housing and housing issues. There was a lot of conversation about using that as a coordinating together and come, so we, coming up with a platform of issues such as how do you get on a path to home ownership? What does safe and healthy housing look like? And what, and also how to be safe? So the plan is to work with the youth congress and our own internal housing team to establish this outreach effort. The group also identified specific or possible policies and procedures that may impact housing stability, such as procedures that maybe relate to vacating homes if a revocation action is underway and what we can do to minimize the disruption to families. Or working more closely with the health department and their healthy homes initiatives, making sure that we're coordinating our programming and looking at things such as perhaps issues relating to parking requirements on a new multifamily housing development. And how all of those are examples of how the policies and practices we identified that might impact housing stability. We also noted that there are several other similar initiatives underway, such as the Cradle to K, which has a housing stability cornerstone. The Promise Zone has housing stability as one of its major goals. And the new housing inventory that's underway, all which really need to be coordinated in order to avoid duplication and ensure consistency when it comes to housing stability. Another thing that we talked about again, related to the fact that there's not a lot of resources available for property owners to make repairs, specifically what we're calling tenant centric repairs. Those are repairs that either reduce costs for the tenants, such as a single family home, if you've got a tenant paying the energy bills, the heating bills, that providing specific resources for those individuals or families that are living in unhealthy homes, which we know are causes for health issues like asthma and respiratory issues for children. So if we were to explore and identify new and existing resources for landlords to make those kinds of improvements, specifically if they're tied to provisions that would minimize the passing on of the costs. So, and then the final one is that we wanted people identified the need to continue to work with our housing first providers so that we can ensure successful housing transitions that support the families and their success integrating into communities. So those are the five areas that we identified as wanting to take further action on as a group. We have preliminary timelines and thoughts on how that would work and we're very excited about moving forward. That concludes my comments.
All right, I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you. I also was using speaker management. I'm not sure if, if, if I'm using the right process to get that mention. But I appreciate that I thought maybe I'd make a couple of comments while your section was ending since we gave Christie so much time and attention during her. So the one thing that struck me here is that we, if we're looking at zero to 24 year olds, that older group could have a different kind of set of issues. I think we see a lot of older youth, 18 to 24, who are homeless. Also affordable housing is very difficult sometimes for that age group. It isn't necessarily the long-term stability of that particular housing, but the temporary housing that you're using as you make your step up to other housing, what is it like and how much is it costing you? I'd be very interested in even looking at in terms of the shelter needs and those demands on that population and what kind of policies we have that are maybe preventing some more short-term accommodations. But even the long-term affordability, I think there's lots of flexibility in households and what you consider your family or your living situation during that age group too. And I think there's some policies that we actually have in place that make it very challenging and hard for people to be law-abiding and still find affordable safe housing in that category. And then I think that it's very different than for, for the youngest children and families and how are they gonna have stable housing? So it's a, it's definitely a challenge and appreciate that we're looking at it and focusing on it so much.
Councilmember Gordon, if I might, we did discuss that quite a bit in the seamless transition and working with youth and homeless youth, specifically in the different types of housing that they need from transitioning from hopping from couch to couch to some stable transitional housing with and look towards how do we, how do we address those issues too? And they came up in the conversation, but when we were sorting out what are the priority areas, we again focused on what's the particular thing that the city can impact? What can we do with regulations and resources for? But I, I do appreciate that and have noted it and will continue to integrate that into our conversation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you've highlighted a lot of the ways that this overlaps with other existing initiatives. And I think this is such a critical, I think we are at a critical time in Minneapolis to look at housing. And, and I think we have, you know, a good period here of, I don't know how long, five to 10 years, where we can perhaps avoid some of the crisis that we're seeing in other cities across the country that haven't, you know, that are just having such demand for living in their city that they're just absolutely not able to meet the needs of their existing population and they're seeing huge amounts of displacement. And so I think this is a really important piece of this work. I, we are, there's a number of things that, that I'm really involved in that overlap with this, including the staff direction that Councilmember Frye and I gave to long range planning to map the housing stock of our city and kind of understand, again, this geographic piece. I also wanted to highlight that, you know, we have a significant rental population, which I'm, I'm curious to understand how that overlaps with our youth population. To Councilmember Gordon's point, I would think that there's a high overlap with that 18 to 24 year old piece. And so that's a population of folks who are very obviously at risk for displacement when housing costs rise. And so Councilmember Worsami and I are just now starting to meet with the city attorney's office to understand, you know, how we might offer better protections for renters in the city. So anyway, I just wanted to say that this, this is really great to look at this housing issue from a youth lens. And I'm excited to support the work going forward as it gets into more of that policy discussion piece.
Seeing any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to introduce now Patience Ferguson to talk about the workforce component.
Chair Johnson and members of the committee, I'm Patience Ferguson, Chief Human Resources Officer for the city. And I am joined by my colleague, Deb Barhalgan, who is the Director in Minneapolis Employment and Training for the City of Minneapolis. The goals of our workforce development team are as follows: to advance policies, procedures and best practices to support the city's work with interns and to identify, support and facilitate, thank you, identify, support and facilitate pathways into potential employment opportunities within the city of Minneapolis. And as you can see, we had a broad, we have a broad base of support representing various departments within the city. We felt that as a group, we needed to take a, before we could do anything, we really needed to do a deeper dive and look at what was currently going on with our internship programs and our feeder programs within the city of Minneapolis. So in order to do that, we actually worked with an urban scholar and we worked with her to look and work and to look at and do research into the majority of our departments. And we, the methodology we used was a couple. We had her to create questionnaire. She also met with individual departments, met with approximately 16 departments. We also looked at current practices within the city and we took it a step further. We looked at promising practices outside of the city, which included other governments within the state of Minnesota. And we also looked at a couple of entities that were in different states, just to get a sense of what people were doing. We also looked at some current laws, such as the Affordable Care Act, which may have an impact on the work that we do with interns. Some of the key findings that we found is number one, in addition to the urban scholar program that many of you are familiar with and the step up program that many of you are familiar with, there's some really great things going on with interns within the city of Minneapolis. And so we identified some great, well-run internship programs and feeder programs in the city. We also identified some areas that we could really improve in. And so some of the key issues and some of the key findings we found is that when you think about the goal of One Minneapolis, one of the areas that we really identified is a lack of coordinated, enterprise-wise approaches to how we position our internship programs within the people, the communities that we are wanting to have more of an impact in. And so we have come up with some solutions and some priorities that we'd like to look at. We also feel that one approach is to really take a much more citywide approach in how we communicate to various communities, how we do outreach in various communities, and also how we recruit. Another component that we, I've identified as a part of this report is to really look at our record-keeping practices, to be able to, using the existing technology that the city has invested in through NeoGov, to really track the use of interns, how we're, how, how many interns are involved in the city? And then to use that technology that we've already invested in from, to help us with recruitment and also to help in reporting, reporting the work that we're doing with interns. We've also identified areas of improvement. So the next steps that the committee will be doing, they will be continuing on the work group. We've also looked at other departments that we need to get engaged in this work. And the group has agreed to act as an advisory committee. And we have looked at the recommendations, are in the process of reviewing, prioritizing and implementing the report recommendations. And then we've also assigned one of our staff to provide some additional leadership guidance and support on behalf of this work. And now I'd like to open it up if you have any questions for any of the members of the Workforce Cabinet Committee. We would love to hear them at this time.
Any questions or discussion? All right, I'm not seeing anything. Thank you for the presentation. And with that, I will move to receive and file. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, the motion carries. With that, we'll move on to our reports of committee. But first, I just want to make a quick clerical motion here. One of the things we talked about was foregoing the paid parental leave policy because it was heard before both Ways and Means and Executive Committee. I want to formally move to delete that from the agenda and move this item on from Ways and Means to the full council. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. And with that, we will turn to our reports of committees. And first up, we have Claims Committee, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Claims Committee has eight claims that we're bringing forward tomorrow. The committee recommended denying all of the claims except for number four, which is authorizing a payment in the amount of $1,148.65. This was a claim at which we felt that there was some fault on behalf of the city as well as the claimant, and we agreed to pay a portion of the claim. With that, I'll happily answer questions on items one through eight.
Not seeing any questions. So if you could move on to the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report.
The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 14 items. Item number one is business operating conditions. Item two is approving a revocation of a taxi cab license. Item three is granting a 90-day extension with regard to the director's order to raise and demolish a garage in the ninth ward. Item four are the liquor, business and gambling license applications. Item five is a business license operating condition for race or kitchen. Item six is a license settlement conference with McDonald's. Item seven and eight are reinstatement of licenses. Item nine is a contract with the Consortium of Community Developers. Item 10 is our Hennepin County TOD grant applications. 11 is a fairly major item. This is establishing the offer price and release of an RFP for about 100 properties in the Humboldt Greenway. Item 12, our grant applications to the Met Council. Item 13 is the Spring 2015 Environmental Grant Funding Application Round. And item 14 is authorizing the final holding rent payment for Laurel Village, so that we can decertify that tax increment district. With that, I'd happily answer questions, items one through 14.
All right, not seeing any questions. Thank you. With that, we'll move to the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report with Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have six items for approval on Friday. The first item is to authorize a contract with the Downtown Improvement District to receive funds in the amount of $28,000 plus for police officers' reports of the Downtown Summer Community Engagement Program. Second item is to authorize MOU agreements in the amount of $20,000 each for the sheriff's office, Metro Transit, and for the State Patrol. The third item is to authorize a contract with Jada Toys permitting them to produce and market diecast replicas of MPD patrol vehicles. Fourth item is to authorize a contract with the University of Minnesota College of Veterinary Medicine in the amount of $1,035 for canine veterinary care. The fifth item is to authorize a contract with the University of Minnesota in the amount of $11,122 to provide bomb unit and canine unit security at concerts to be staged at TCF Bank Stadium. And the sixth item is to authorize a contract with Hennepin County on behalf of the sheriff's office for payment and fees for pre-trial detention at the jail, and authorizing any documents necessary to effectuate the agreements. And with that, I can try to answer any questions.
I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you very much. With that, we'll turn to Transportation and Public Works Committee with Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee will be forwarding six items to the full council. Item one is opposing legislation to increase truck size and weight on our city streets, alleys, and bridges. The following items refer to the Ways and Means Committee. Item two is the 31st Street East Resurfacing Project. Item three is the 26th Avenue North Renovation Project. Item four is the 7th Street Ramp Project Cooperative Construction Agreement. Item five is the accepting federal highway safety improvement program funds. And then six are a series of bids for operations of the department. I will stand for any questions.
Not seeing any questions. Thank you. With that, we'll move to the Ways and Means Committee Report with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ways and Means will have 15 items for consideration on Friday. The first are the five legal settlements. Number two is the Creative City Roadmap Work Group Contract. Items three, four, and five are bids for convention center-related audio system upgrade, exhibit hall wall painting, and irrigation improvement projects. Item number six is a, and seven are two lease agreements related to the Mill Quarter ramp space, as well as a MinDOT lease agreement. We also have a traffic maintenance building renovation project is item number eight. Item nine is the, and 10 are two grants. One is for the Stable Food Ordinance Research Project Grant, and the other is for the School Based Clinic Program Grant. We also have the execution of a contract for Public Works Automated Dispatch Locating System with Cortera Inc. Items 12 and 13 are for two appointed positions. One is the new appointed position for Director of Transportation Planning and Programming, and the other is the manager field support. Fourteenth item is the Merchant Services Contract. This is for credit card payments, accepting credit card payments and processing with US Bank Elavan. And the final item is the paid parental leave policy. Happy to answer any questions on those items.
Not seeing any questions. Thank you, and we'll move on to our Zoning and Planning Committee Report with Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We just have two items from zoning and planning. Both are related to environmental assessment worksheets for the RITZ block development, as well as superior plating site. In both cases, we approved the staff recommendation that an environmental assessment worksheet was adequate, and that an EIS was not required.
Wonderful. I'm not seeing any questions. With that, we have completed our business for today, so our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.